Today's date is August the 13th, 2018. The time is 5:38. And I call this public hearing to order. Not being, we do not require a quorum. Is that correct, Ivan?
Yes.
So we will not be taking roles. So we'll go ahead. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, this public hearing is on the optional flexible school day program. Mrs. Peterson, Sue Peterson, our Assistant Superintendent of Secondary Education and Leadership, will be presenting. I'd also like to thank Ms. Norma Brewer and Dr. Raoul Cantu for helping to prepare this.
Before we move forward, we have an item that is establishment of a quorum. However, our council has instructed us that we are not required to have one because it's only a public hearing. It is a public hearing. So, but since it is on the agenda, we will proceed with a, to establish quorum, that being all members present, with the exception of Dr. Rodriguez. Go ahead.
Good evening, Dr. Canales and members of the board. We're presenting today on the optional flexible school day program. This has been in place in Weslaco for the past eight years, and it's a lever recovery option for us. So it was authorized by House Bill 1 back in 2006, and we were authorized to begin in 2009. However, Wesco ISD did not start this program until the 2010-2011 school year. And again, it's for a lever recovery. So TEA offers us the opportunity to offer a program that offers flexible hours for students. So the students that we're targeting for this are students that have already dropped out of school, are at risk of dropping out, or will be denied credit for one or more classes in which they've been enrolled as a result of attendance requirements. And our goals are simple. We'd like to improve our graduation rate and reduce our dropout rate. So what happens on an optional flexible day is students have the opportunity to attend a flexible schedule. And instead of being penalized for their absences, the district only receives credit when they're present for at least 45 minutes. So it's an alternate method of attendance accounting. It does require record keeping and additional work for our PMS persons, but again, it's an option for our students. They must take STAR, so any student that's not test complete must still take STAR if they're enrolled. They may participate in UIL, but the students in this program rarely participate anything extracurricular. They're mostly overage students who are just trying to graduate. So we must submit an annual application to the Texas Education Agency and request approval for participation. We must have a public hearing, which is what we're doing this evening, and then it is on the board agenda. And if approved, then we will apply and submit the application to TEA. This past year, we had the following students you can see on the table participate at Wesco High School, 28 participated at East, 9, and at South Palm Gardens, 7. We're not requesting any slots for our Kate Early College High School, as those students are enrolled in dual enrollment, and it is not an option for them to be on a flexible day. They must be present every day for the college courses. So we're requesting 50 slots for our comprehensive high schools and 25 for South Palm Gardens. This past year, we had graduates from this program, three from Wesco High School, two from East, and two from South Palms. I'd like to share a story of two of them from Wesco High School, and this is exactly the type of program, this, type of student this program is designed for. They were a married couple, and they had a small child. The boy had to work all day, and the young lady stayed home with the baby. They came to school after 5:00, when her mom was there to take care of the child, and then they were able to come to school, and they both graduated last spring. So Mrs. Morales was familiar with their story and shared the picture of them, and that's exactly the type of student we target with this. So even though we only had seven graduates, there are seven that may not have graduated without this option. And really, that's it in a nutshell. So do you have any questions or comments?
Actually, it's a good program, you know, when you recover students that are overage. Do you know, out of those, like those last year's participants, how many will be coming back? Or you won't know until actually they-
We won't know until we go into the lever recovery mode, which starts shortly. So Mrs. Brewer, Dr. Cantu are already reviewing the lists of levers that we've identified that left us last year during the year that didn't finish. And some of those students are on, some of those, like 28 at Wesco High School, they didn't all make it. So we will be inviting them back, as many as possible.
Any of those were lacking tax? I know tax was-
They don't have to take tax anymore. They're able to transition.
That's right.
And actually, we did graduate a few students last year who were missing one tax test.
Correct.
And we brought them in, and they went to the committee, so we were able to graduate a few.
Good. I think it's a good program.
Thank you. Any other questions?
You had, what was the total that we're in last year?
It was, let me back up to that slide.
Was it 872?
28, 9, and 7.
Correct. Okay, so you already have those students, and I know that you said you don't know who's coming back.
We know who those students were that we need to look for and get them back in.
Exactly.
So we already know who they are.
Okay. Well, let's, let's make sure that we, we do it and not give up on them.
No, we will not give up them.
Okay.
We need to be sure of that. And the state does track our five and six-year completion rates, so we want them back, even if they didn't finish in four.
Let's be flexible, because that's what is called.
I don't know what happened to the PowerPoint there, but any other questions?
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. Okay, well, since that concludes the presentation on the optional flexible school day program, we'll move on to item number four, public comments on the optional flexible school day program. So at this time, the public is invited to come up and comment, ask questions. And in reality, during public comments, it is different than during, during our regular board meetings, in that as a board, we're able to talk back to you and give you answers to your questions. And during the school board, when it's a meeting, it's not an option. Then those are just comments. Am I correct, Ivan?
Yeah, there can be a dialogue, so long as it's related to the item that's on the agenda.
Right. Yeah, as long as we talk about this item, we can, we can talk about it back and forth. But during board meetings, on comments, we cannot answer or not reply. So at this time, if anybody wants to come up and make some comments on the flexible school day program, that's twice, I'll ask one more time. Is there anybody that wants to make a comment on the optional flexible school day program? Okay. There being none, I will move on to item number five, which is the adjournment. Time now is 5:45, and this public hearing is closed. Everybody ready to go? Andres?
Yes, sir.
Time is now 5:46. Today's date is August the 13th, 2018. And at this point, we're gonna start a workshop and on the budget.
Yes, sir.
So, Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, we do have the budget workshop. This is not the first one we've had for this year. Mr. Andres and his staff have worked really, really hard on balancing the budget, the proposed budget, and he has the latest information for you today. I'd like to add that our business office did score a perfect score of 100 for, for how many years in a row?
I forgot. It's 14 or 15.
For 14, for maybe almost 15 years in a row. So, Mr. Andres, Sanchez.
Thank you, Dr. Canales. Mr. Lopez, members of the board, you have a copy of the presentation for the budget there. I'm gonna try to highlight items that I haven't mentioned before, and some of them I will emphasize since this is the last budget workshop before the public hearing, which will take place next week. Our federal funds, we were announced that they're gonna get cut, so we're gonna get some cuts on Title I Regular, and the Title III, bilingual ESL funds. So we're making adjustments in those budgets. On page three, our budget is based on $15,905 ADA, which is pretty much what we had for the final ADA for the best four, six weeks of our last school year, 2017-18. Our budget is based on certified property values released by the Apresia District of There is an increase of 1.19% over last year's certified values. One thing that is important to mention is when we started the budget process, we were using preliminary values issued by the Apresia District in March. There were actually $2.4 billion. So when we started with the budget, we had 100 more million to work with on our calculations for property taxes. When we got the values, after we came back from the break, we had to look at it and make some cuts, as you all remember I discussed. So we went through the budget and used the new certified values, and that's what we're presenting now. Our tax rate, we're presenting, recommending a $1.16, $1.16, 1.14 on the MNO rate, and 2 cents in the INS rate. Our current tax collections are budgeted at 91%. Our goal is 93. Through July of this year, we have collected 94.91%, which is very good. And on the delinquent taxes, they're budgeted at 20% of the balance at the beginning of the year. The goal is 27. As of July 31, we collected already 27.86%. So we're above our goals on both of them. Allocations to the schools. We provide elementary schools an allocation that they can, principals allocate it whatever they wanted, working with their site-based committee, and anything that is not related to payroll, custodial, maintenance, facility, anything else. Elementary schools get $120 per ADA. Middle schools, 135. High schools, 200. We had done a survey of schools in the Bridge One area. We got aid response the last time. I don't have a copy with me. But last time, they were presented, there were two schools that had higher rates than we do, and the other five are lower. What the schools mentioned, then the allocation they give to the schools, they use bilingual funds, and all funds, ours are all local funds. Based on the budget that we have, the circumstances we have, I believe the amount we're allocating this year are good. We're trying to raise them, although the, because ADA is lower, and we have additional needs now with a flood and everything else, so that's the best that we could do for right now. We also have allocations for a bank, which are listed in the report that we have mentioned before. Tank capacity funds budget includes enough funds to provide for accelerated instruction of students that are at risk of dropping out of school. I had mentioned to the board before, that our administration was conservatively estimating a $2 million surplus at the end of the budget year. The surplus actually went to 3.2 million. However, in July, we brought an amendment to the board because we had to buy buses and vehicles, as you all remember. So we used about $5.9 million from fund balance for facilities to fill the needs, and $1,535,000 from local revenues from increased taxes and interest income. So with those calculations in mind, our surplus right now looks at $1,665,000. And this is a conservative figure. By the time we finish, we're hoping that it'll go up. And hopefully, next month, I can give you a better idea of what the surplus is gonna On health insurance, we budgeted 100, we budgeted an increase of $15 on the district costs. We went from 470 per employee per month to 485 per employee per month. On the third bullet, on the employee side, we have an agenda item to be presented at the meeting, that recommends increasing the cost or contribution by employees to their insurance, like their premium, going, by, going up by $16 per month, from 9 to $25. There will be an increase of $192 per year per employee, and that's also to help to the, raise the fund that we need for the health insurance fund. The budget includes, as mentioned before, six resource officers that we had discussed that we would provide by, once we got the 2 cents increase on the INS tax rate. It also has eight teachers budgeted for the full-day pre-K. And as we need a teacher, we'll hire them. Right now, we're still working with the enrollment figures on that, but we have them in the budget. There is no money budgeted for facilities at this time, transfer to construction fund, and the interest income was increased in the budget by $220,000. The next chart shows that we have a total of 12 vacancies posted in the budget. There's three allocated to schools, two to East High School, one to Quayam Middle School, a construction, maintenance manager, and the eight teachers for full-day pre-K. We have approximately $1.8 million in additional vacancies that are not posted in the budget that we might need this coming year. The next slide emphasizes-
Come back to that one?
Yes, sir.
What, you have a list of approximately, you said, 1,800 additional vacancies?
No, $1,800,000 in vacancies.
Right. Those were the ones that we didn't fill?
Those are, are not included in here. Yes, sir.
Okay.
The decrease in the price values, when we did our calculations on the taxes, lower our property value, I mean, our property tax revenue in our state aid related to property taxes by almost 1.5 million. That's what this chart emphasizes. A million 468,000 less revenue that we're gonna get because of the lower price value that we got. That's why we had to make the cuts that we made. On the next slide, page 12, when I, the last time that I talked to the board, I was trying to recommend a $500 pay increase for all employees. The board wanted me to, I told the board, I'm gonna go back and see what we can do because at this time, at the last meeting, I didn't have money for a pay raise. So we went through, we made some adjustments, reran our budget figures and everything, so we were able to include a $750 pay raise for all employees. We have the eight full-day pre-K teachers, the six resource officers. On the changes or decreases that we made, I had a contingency allocated on the, I still have in the function 11, we cut it by $55,000. I have close to 300 and some thousand, I forgot the exact amount. Those amounts that we used during the years, several items that we do, and the amounts are not known exactly, we leave them there. Until we need it, we, we are calculating from there. We had 200,000 allocated to function 36, which is used either for athletics or extracurricular activities, trips for students. We had to cut $200,000 from there. I had mentioned that I had allocated $275,000 for overtime in the transportation department. I had to remove that as well. And the Instruction Materials Administration Committee approved to fund two instructional programs totaling $238,000. So by having the IME funding pay for those, we were able to remove from the local maintenance budget. Those are the cuts that we had to make. On the positive side, we'd like to recommend to the board to approve an additional one-time stipend for all employees that will be paid in May of 2019, but will be contingent of the district achieving an additional $145 ADA than what we have budgeted. We budgeted $15,905, and if we actually get a $16,050 ADA, we have money to pay an additional pay raise. The recommendation is to pay additional $400 for teachers, 300 for administrators, and 150 for private professional, many trades, and technical trade staff. And this is, again, if we get the additional ADA, which I hope we can get it, we will be able to pay this stipend for everybody, and it will be paid in May. We wait till May because the ADA, we know by the end of, the middle of April, the end of the fifth, sixth weeks, we'll know whether we're gonna achieve the ADA or not. At that time, we can tell the board, and they will run the calculations, so we can pay it in May.
So how many students did you say we needed for this year? 100 or what? More?
145 ADA.
ADA.
Does, I mean, 145 students that come every day to school, basically.
Correct.
That's in addition to what we budgeted, right?
Yes, sir.
Correct. Okay. So the, the pay raise is for everyone across the board? This is the 750?
750, yes, sir. That's what's in the budget right now, yes.
So no percentage, not just across the board?
No, a certain amount, yes.
Is the one-time stipend in addition to the 750?
Yes, sir, in addition.
So as long as we hit ADA, you know, our principals, teachers, making sure our kiddos are here, and we hit that $16,050, that's where the additional kicks in?
Yes, sir. And everybody will get an amount.
Okay.
Mr. Sanchez, and the overtime allocation for transportation, you don't see, foresee that?
We might need it. One of the things that we're gonna do, Dr. Rodriguez, we bought new buses, we should need repairs, so the money will move from repairs to overtime.
So you're cut down-
You're gonna help in a way we have no buses.
You're cut down from the repairs because of the warranty work.
Right, yes, sir, exactly.
You can allocate that money to go, in case we need it for the overtime.
Yes, we had discussed that, Mr. De La Rosa and Dr. Canales on that.
How much, how much were we averaging or spending on, on maintenance work?
I don't have a figure to tell you, but I can put it in the update for that.
So Andres, on the co-curricular, you said minus 200,000, right?
Yes, sir.
Because that doesn't include the teams when they make the playoffs, correct? Or is it part of that?
Some of that money goes there, yes, sir.
Okay, but if, if, at the end, if they did additional money, well, especially when they go travel to playoffs, we'll have to provide that if it's not on the budget.
As we go through the budget, or, as we go through the year, we'll see how the expenditure go, whether we use all the money that we have allocated in the budget in areas. I still have a couple of contingency accounts in the functions.
Correct.
I put about 10,000 in some functions. We have the schools sometimes to meet up an amendment to the board for 700, 300. Instead of bringing a lot of budget amendments, I pay them from those contingencies. I tell them stop, get it from there, that way we don't have additional amendments to the board. So if we don't use them, but this happens in December, late November of the playoffs, so we'll have a better idea that we can use some of that money.
In the last couple of years, both schools have done very well advancing, so, you know, to just make sure we have that money later on.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work with them, yes.
Okay.
Could you discuss a little more at length about your, the administration's proposal to increase the employee premium to the health plan?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy, that information is actually, I have a presentation prepared on behalf of the superintendent's report. I can go through it now or wait till that happens. It's-
Members rather wait, or do you want to hear it now?
Or whatever questions you have, I can, I can answer.
What was the question again? One-
Mr. De La Rosa mentioned he's plans on making the presentation later on in tonight's-
Well, you can give him a quick, quick answer, and then we go in depth during the meeting.
In a nutshell, we're estimating for next plan year, we're gonna need approximately $17 million to fund the plan for next year. Right now, we've spent approximately $15 million on the plan. So based on the analysis and the trend, we haven't had an employee increase in two years. So in order to kind of make sure we have enough in reserve and build a, you know, a good reserve, not have to come back at the, you know, at the end of the year and fund, like we had to do last year, and move, you know, $4 million into the health account because we're short. So we're adequately funding it. So it's still very fair and equitable. I know it's a, it's an increase, but compared to other districts, we're still way below a lot of them.
Will you have that difference in the, in your presentation?
It's there.
Okay.
Okay, I guess we'll wait for more details in your other presentation.
On page 13, at the bottom, we have, we anticipate receiving an insurance settlement on buses and pickup trucks and suburbans of approximately $3.2 million. The next slide shows debt service funds. This is the funds where we use the money from the INS taxes to pay our bonds. We expect to have at the end of the year, this year, $2.1 million in the fund balance.
A blessing.
And we're gonna collect about 442,000 in taxes, 600,000 on state aid, ADA and IFA funds. That's interest and a transfer from the local fund. We'll have 4.1 million, and we'll pay 3,955 in bond payments. So we'll end up getting about almost 190,000 at the end of next year on the INS fund. The next slide is ADA, breakdown of the ADA for the last seven years. The following is enrollment, also for the last seven years. We're looking at, our calculation was to have 17,491 enrollment, peak enrollment. Right now, the enrollment we have is about 17,000, close to 400. So we're close, and we still haven't finished with all the, getting the numbers of the enrollment from students. And the last one is slide on the tax rate, which has been one of the lowest in the valley. One more slide, I mentioned early, we will have next month a public hearing, next month, next meeting, next week, at 5:30, a public hearing on the proposed budget and tax rate. We advertised it in the newspaper and the monitor on Friday, had to be advertised at least 10 days before the meeting. So we did the advertisement. And then after the public hearing, we'll have the special board meeting, and two items that will be included in there will be the approval of the budget for the fiscal year 2018, 2019, and the local, the general fund and the debt service fund. We'll also have the proposed tax rate for next fiscal year. And the last slide that I have there, I left you a separate piece of paper there. It's a summary of all the funds in the general fund, sub-funds, loco main, LGT, K, all the funds, all the way to food service included. The budget is balanced. At the end, we ended up with about $55,000 surplus, so we added to our contingency account on function 11. So when the schools need money, like I said, we take it from there. So the total revenues is 169,942,000, almost 943,000 in revenues. The expenditures are 169,43,000, and we'll transfer 900,000 to the INS fund, so we'll end up with a breakeven budget. Any questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
The total income or total that we're getting is a much, 116?
169.
169 million.
Almost 170 million, total.
It keeps on going down every year?
Well, this usually goes up. This time, the ADA, as you all remember, we're budgeting less ADA revenue. Last time, we had 16, 170, so it was about 2 million less than last year.
Okay.
So that is why it's lower.
Is the lower ADA the cause of the lower federal funding we're gonna receive next budget year?
No, the state funds.
Yeah, but what, what-
The federal funds.
What's the cause of the lower federal funds?
The government, because they're making cuts-
Okay.
-on the federal level, yes, sir.
So how much did they cut for this coming year?
The amount, we knew about 330,000 in the Title I Regular Fund, Title I A. Those are the two, we don't know the final number yet, but that was the preliminary number they gave us to plan our budgets.
Now, several years back, and I'll go in that part, maybe five years ago, was it about 175 million or 180 million dollars that we were receiving in our, for, in our budget? Dr. Rivera, do you remember?
I don't, don't remember the amount. That amount.
I remember it was being up either right at or close to 180 million dollars. So now we're under 170, 170 million dollars, you know, and, and I know that we, as a board, try to do everything we can, and, and you've been getting perfect scores on your, on the work that you do in handling our money. So it's just that it's tightening up.
No, okay, what I wanna say, this is just the general fund.
Right.
We still have federal funds. It's about 190 million, the whole budget.
The whole budget is 190, okay.
This is just the general fund. The board only has to approve the general fund and the debt service fund. The federal program do not get approval by the board, that's why we don't bring that discussion to the board.
All right. I got you now.
But really, every year has gone up?
A little bit, yes, sir. The collections are, the executive with the ADA, it's a little low.
That's what hurt us.
Yes. In fact, in this form, the middle section says proposed budget 2017, 2018, it had 172,82,000 in revenues. And the first, second column, bottom figure, says a decrease of 2,139,000, which was about 2 million on ADA. That's a comparison, last year's proposed budget, the board approved to this one.
Well, Dr. Rivera, you're-
She's well, well-prepared. You and your staff?
Thank you, sir.
I have one question.
You went and cut some of the areas-
Yes, sir.
-and were able to get the salary increase up, so good job in, in reducing the budget.
Thank you.
I have one question. I know, I know last, last, the last workshop we had, I think you proposed that we would lose 1,000 kids due to the flood.
Well-
And then asking some questions, I think we ended up with a number. Sergio, do we have an update on that? On the, on the kids that were affected by the flood?
Yes.
Do we have an update as far as numbers? If anybody's leaving the, the school district?
The last, it's basically, the, the last report that we had was that we had about seven students only that had moved out of the district. The rest remained.
After contacting most of the families that were affected-
After contacting most of the families that were affected, right?
Yes, but, and those, and those students, the staff is still contacting them.
Okay.
Some of those students who moved out, you know, since they do qualify for homeless, that's how we're trying to get them back.
All right. And I appreciate you went down to two hundred on the proposal.
Again, this is a worst-case scenario, we were to lose. We were looking at, it's, by the comment they made on the phone call they made, that a lot of the parents was still coming back, so, so, well.
Exactly, so.
Well, I, I mentioned the number the first time when we had the initial numbers, we were to lose.
Right.
Because we had five thousand students affected.
And I do appreciate you, this time you went with two hundred, so that's a little bit more, you know.
Yes.
But, you know, that way we can tighten it up for the next work, workshop, so.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Some will leave, but some will come into the district.
Yes, sir.
So he'll count himself.
Right now, working out, looking good. Any other comments or questions?
Thank you, Andres.
Good job, Andres.
Andres, can you just get the, the number from Mr. Garcia on the savings from the maintenance?
Maintenance.
Because we got new buses.
Oh, the maintenance, repair system.
Can you get, or Mr. Garcia, if you have that number?
Good evening, Board, Dr. Canales. We get about two hundred thousand, a little over two hundred thousand, and, and we've been expanding all of it, actually, because we had an older, an older fleet. But now, we have also gotten the maintenance and energy management fleet, and that's where nothing's been worked out yet, so I need to be really advised to see where I'm gonna get the monies to do that, because we're not gonna completely not use anything.
Okay.
So, and we do, just to keep in mind, we did keep about twenty-five old buses, so we're still gonna need some monies.
Okay.
Good presentation, Andres.
Good, good job. Can we approve this next week?
Yes, next week is the final.
Any other questions?
Good job, Andres.
There, should just keep track of all the kids going to the idea, to the Elsa idea. Once the school year starts, how many from the district?
Time is now six-ten, and that concludes budget workshop. I need a couple of minutes, and then we'll start the regular board meeting. Time is six-twenty-one, today's date, August thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, and I call this a regular board meeting to order of the Westlaco Independent School District. Item number two is establishment of a quorum. Let the record reflect that we have a full quorum present. Item number three, opening prayer, Dr. Canales.
Okay, Mr. Robledo will introduce our, the employee who will be saying the opening prayer.
Good afternoon. This afternoon, the invocation will be delivered this evening by campus instructor, facilitator Araceli Chavarin.
Please bow your heads with me. Lord of heaven, God of all creation, there is no one like you. You are the fountain of all wisdom and understanding. We humbly come before your presence to ask that you pour upon our superintendent, board members, and administrators wisdom from above. Wisdom to make tough decisions and to stand firm upon integrity. Wisdom to be good stewards of all finances and resources. But above all, wisdom to guide our precious students to fulfill their purpose in life. Your word tells us that everything we do, whether in word or action, must be done for your glory. I ask you, Lord, that your hand of love, mercy, and protection be upon all our teachers and our students as they come to the end of their summer vacation, and that they return eager to learn and grow. Help us obtain strength and endurance to make twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, the greatest year of victory for Westlaco ISD. In your precious name of Jesus, we ask all things, amen.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Moving on to item number four is pledge of allegiance, Texas pledge, Dr. Canales.
Mr. Robledo.
Okay. Well, if I can have three members of the Wildcat Regiment, please stand, stand up as I introduce you, and they will be leading us in the, in the pledge. I would like to introduce, y'all can face this way for right now. First of all, I'd like to introduce Victoria Mena, who is right here. Victoria is the daughter of Raymond and Adelia Mena. She is a senior at Westlaco East High School and is the head drum major for the Wildcat Regiment. Victoria is a three-time Texas State solo and ensemble medalist, a UIL academic state medalist, a BPA national alternate, and a member of the National Honor Society and the Hispanic National Honor Society. Victoria plans to major in music at the University of Texas at Austin. How about a big hand for Victoria Mena? And if her parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? Up next, right here in the middle, we have Georgie Anne Gonzalez, and she is the daughter of George Gonzalez and Pauline Puente. She is a first assistant drum major for the Westlaco East Wildcat Regiment. Georgie is a state solo and ensemble recipient, a member of the National Honor Society and astronomy club. Georgie plans to study at the University of Texas at Austin and major in biology. How about a big hand for Georgie? If her parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? And we also have here Lori Rodriguez, who is the daughter of Juan Rodriguez Junior and Gracie Rodriguez. She is the second assistant drum major for the Wildcat Regiment. She is a two-time all-state solo and ensemble recipient. Lori is an honor student and is also a member of the National Honor Society. Lori also participates in HOSA and the Interact Club. After graduation, she wants to study at the University of Texas and major in biology. How about a big hand for Lori? And if her parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? Her parents? Okay, if everyone can please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas pledge?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, there's, we have something for you. I don't know if there's any money in there.
Thank you. Moving on to item number five, awards and recognitions, Dr. Canales.
Mr. Robledo, will you lead us through this?
Okay, tonight we have some student recognitions. If we can bring out our students, these are AP scholar students from Westlaco East and Westlaco High School. How about a big hand as they enter the room? Okay, we have more AP scholars, but some of them have already graduated and gone on to college, and others are participating in either band or are not present here today. So we're gonna recognize those that are here today, but first, let me say, let me talk a little bit about this. So tonight, we want to recognize several high school students who recently received academic recognition on the national level. The College Board Advanced Placement Program recently recognized several of our students for their exceptional achievement on the AP exams. These students took part in college-level courses while still in high school to earn college credit, advanced placement, or both. A small percentage of the millions of students worldwide who took the AP exams performed at a sufficiently high level to earn AP Scholar Award. AP Scholars, as I say your name, if you could please stand forward so we can recognize you. AP Scholars completed three or more AP exams with scores of three or higher in subjects that include biology, chemistry, world history, and English literature. From Westlaco East, those that are present here tonight, we have Marcos Alemán. We also have Sorada, Soraida Castillo. Andrea Cruz. Joel de los Santos. Annalisa Salinas. All right, did I get everybody from Westlaco East? Did anybody come in here late? Okay, good, good. All right, now let's move on to those that are present here from Westlaco High School. And we have here on my list Stephanie Castillo. Am I missing somebody? I think I got, am I missing someone? I'm missing, there's two more, you got yours already, okay. All right, so I want to just make sure, because I know there's one more left. Now, two students earned the AP Scholar with Distinction Award. These students had an average score of at least three point five on all P, all AP exams taken, and scored three or higher on five or more exams. Students are Cesar Maldonado, who's not here, and we also have, we also have Brianna Miranda. Thank you very much, and congratulations, AP Scholars. Good job. Parents? Did you see your parents in there? Parents? Parents, I know you're here, if you can please stand and be recognized, all the Okay, up next, we have some more students to recognize. These are students who took part in the Texas Boy State Leadership Conference this summer. Come on in, how about a big hand for our boy state participants? And we also have a member of the girl state team that was also taking part in this, this summer. All right, so several high school students spent their summer forming political parties and passing laws as part of the twenty eighteen American Legion Texas Boy State Leadership Conference. Our Westlaco ISD delegates were selected on a highly competitive basis. We'll start off from Westlaco High School. We have Daniel Mireles. From Westlaco East, we have Daniel Magana. We also have David Magana. Robert Torres. Jett Casades. And Umberto Romo. The Texas State Boys Conference was held June tenth through the fifteenth at the University of Texas at Austin campus. The conference offers a unique learn-by-doing environment where delegates run many state, district, county, and city offices representing fictional political parties. Now, two Westlaco East High School students were also part of the American Legion Auxiliary Blue Bonnet Girl State Conference this summer, and we have here with us Nadia Gutierrez. Rosie Garza was also a participant, but she is not here. They represented Westlaco during the seventy-fourth session of Girl State. These young ladies traveled to Texas Lutheran University campus in Seguin, where they formed cities, adopted charter, and elected city officials. Boy State and girls, girls and boy State serve to empower young men and women to become community and civic leaders at all levels of government. Congratulations to you all. And parents, if you're present, can you please stand and be recognized? Thank you very much, congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job, Jett.
Up next, we would like to recognize some students who participated in the NHI Summer Program. If you have a big hand for them as they enter the room. Congratulations goes out to four Westlaco ISD students who this summer participated in the National Hispanic Institute Collegiate World Series. NHI is a national leadership program that teaches speaking and debate skills through competition, the legislative process in which students run for state representative, governor, Supreme Court, and other elected offices. And before their senior year, they learn the college admissions process through inquiry-based learning, which engages students in an investigative and question-driven approach to mapping out the next twelve to sixty months of their lives. After four years of being involved in this organization, these students graduated from the NHI program, receiving a certificate and NHI cords to wear to graduation. We do have one graduate from Westlaco East who is not present, but I would like to recognize him. He is Javi de la Garza. And there were three students from Westlaco High School, not present here, Gabriela And present here, we have Calista Robledo. And we also have here Tiana Guerra. If their parents are here, can they please stand and be recognized? Congratulations, thank you very much.
Congratulations. And that concludes our awards and recognitions.
Real quick, Dr. Canales, I want to commend, of course, the principals and yourself and the central office for, we had over forty, there were AP scholars this year. So I commend to the, the teachers and the principals at each respective high school.
At this time, I'd like to ask the board to change the order of the day, and I'll require a motion for that, and we'll vote on it. What I'd like to do is go into closed session right now, instead of waiting till the end of the meeting.
I move to change the order of the day.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to change the order of the day, go into closed session. Is there a discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Most say no? Motion carries. Okay, the time is, time is six-thirty-six, and this board is going into closed session. Okay. Hold on, we gotta read. Okay, in closed session, we'll be discussing personnel matters. Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four. Item number one, employment of personnel. Item number two, resignations. Item number three, deliberation regarding the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four and five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one. Item A under that is superintendent's recommendation for the position of principal for Westlaco East High School. Item B, consultation with attorneys regarding A, a pending litigation, pending or contemplated litigation. Item B, a settlement offer, or C, a matter which the duty of the attorney of the Westlaco Independent School District under Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code, Texas Government Code five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one. Again, the time is six-thirty-eight, and we're going into closed session. Again, the time is 6:38, and we're going into closed session. Time now is 7:21, and we're back in open session. Items discussed in closed session were: A, personnel matters, Texas Government Code 551.074. Item number one, employment of personnel. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, I move that you approve the employment of personnel as discussed in closed session.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Patrick and a second by Andrew. Is there any further discussion? Everybody none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item number two, resignations. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, I'm recommending that the board approve the mid-contract resignations subject to finding suitable replacements as applicable and discussed in the closed session.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Patrick and a second by Andrew on to approve the resignations. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Moving on to item number three, deliberation regarding the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, Texas Government Code 551.074 and 551.071. Item A under this category is superintendent's recommendation for the position of principal for Wesco East High School. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, for the position of the principal for Wesco East High School, I am recommending Dr. David Gamboa.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Oxus Caballero and a second by Patrick Kennedy. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item B, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation; B, a settlement offer; or C, a matter in which the duty of the attorney of the Wesco ISD under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Chapter 551, Texas Government Code 551.071. Dr. Canales.
This is a no-action.
No-action item. Okay. This time, we will move back to the regular items as they were presented on the agenda. And the next item we have is item number six. Public comments. Today, we have two people that signed up for public comments. First one is Sergio Lopez... Excuse me, Sergio Garza. Mr. Garza?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to need your address before you take off. And then you're going to have five minutes, but I have to read something to you before you start talking.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
You are to address only matters that concern the school district. You are not to attack any district employee or board member. We will not tolerate any disruptive behavior by any member of the audience. If you do not abide, you will be directed to cease and leave the building.
Crystal clear.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
We'll be taking the time.
Go ahead.
The reason for being here today is to express some concerns on AC work on campuses. The temperature here today is very adequate. But imagine if we were sitting here and there was no AC work. Or if no one had thought that we should have portable AC units, right? So that's what we're talking about here. First and foremost, it only makes sense that AC work in the commercial building of any kind should be done when it's not being occupied. It is not... This is usually the best time to do repairs. But if nobody thought of this, and if nobody is occupying the building, then it is the responsibility of central office staff to provide adequate working conditions. Remember, we are in the US. We cannot have teachers that are not getting paid to be there, teachers that are volunteering their time to prepare for a new school year, teachers that are there for the kids sweating enclosed campuses, and some even getting sick over the non-ventilated areas. Now, the custodians personally have seen them. They're out there working. They're cleaning the carpets. They're cleaning the tile. They're doing what they should be doing, performing their duties. But it is very hot in these campuses. Excuse me. Central office personnel should have portable units ready for staffers. Central office were the only ones that knew when these projects were going to start, when contractors were scheduled to be there. So, AC units are shut down, and no units are in place. We live in South Texas. It's very hot here. Temperatures are over 100 degrees. It is a closed, non-ventilated building, as I had stated earlier. Who's thinking of these processes? Who's thinking these processes through? When the ACs were shut off... When the ACs were shut off, people were told that it would be two to three days to get the AC system working. However, today marks the day, the third week, and there is still no AC in certain areas of several campuses. We have heard many reasons why, and they go on and on. It really doesn't matter why. Some people are saying that the wrong units were ordered. But all we're trying to do is just get the AC units back up and working so that the teachers and the staffers that are there that are forced... I mean, not that are forced, that have to be there so they can perform their duties. That's all that we're asking. My voice is a little scratched because of my allergies. Excuse me. So, yeah, so that's all we're asking for, that the AC units out there, that they get, you know, they hurry up. I'm not sure what's holding up the process. But, once again, the AC here is adequate. What if we didn't have AC units here? Everybody would be a little bit more uncomfortable. You know, it wouldn't be a good meeting if the AC wasn't working. On a different note, on the agenda, I noticed also that on letter H, that we're wanting to borrow more money again. I'm not sure. It doesn't say there what the monies are for, that we're trying to borrow money for. But it doesn't even say how many millions we're trying to borrow. But under letter H, it says there that they're trying to get some insurance certificates, probably, you know, that's usually trying to borrow money. Once again, we don't know how many... What that money is for. We know that the buses were flooded earlier in the year. And actually, that just brings back a whole different story there that we've... A lot of people out in the community, and sometimes people don't say anything, but maybe this is the right time to say it. They... The word is that we know that the area where the buses are, we know that it floods out there. And there was a lot of times that the warnings were out that there was going to be a lot of rain. So, Mike, well, I can ask a question, but I guess the issue is that those buses should have been moved. I mean, we feel, the community feels, that the buses should have been moved. And if the buses would have been moved, we wouldn't be trying to get more money to buy more buses. And that is unfortunate because the only one that pays at the end are the taxpayers. And I feel that it was something that, you know, we could have definitely avoided. So, in closing, I would just like to tell the parents of Westlaco that, you know, to remember that we need to be out there and pick people out there that are going to advocate for our kids. And more importantly, watch the funds, how we're spending them. Very important that we're spending our funds correctly. And like I said, a lot of people call me all the time. I try, you know, sometimes I'm like, well, it's not my battle to fight. But I do get a lot of phone calls, and I don't know why, but a lot of people call and say, hey, you know, this is what's going on. Same thing with the AC units. People are calling and saying, you know, why don't you go up there and say what needs to be said? But, so there it is. Nothing hard. I mean, the AC units, nothing hard. If we would have planned better for it, we wouldn't have the situations that we have in some of the schools.
Thank you. That is it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next person that signed up for public comments is Renee Dyer. Okay, let me read to you the same... Start to your comments. "You are to address only matters that concern the school district. You are not to attack any district employee or board member. Will not tolerate any disruptive behavior by any member of the audience. If you do not abide, you will be directed to cease and leave the meeting." I know that's not going to happen, but I had to read it. Okay, so you have five minutes, and you can start with your address and your name.
My name's Renee Dyer. I live at 1550 South Milano's in Westlaco.
Thank you.
I had several cards prepared, but I just want to maybe step back and thank you. Dr. Canales, when you send out an email, I don't know if you are aware, but the tagline in your email, the quote by Margaret Mead, it says a lot. And tonight, you guys did what Dr. Canales's quote embodies. The quote by Margaret Mead reads, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has." Tonight, your decision in selecting the best principal for Wesco East High School has changed the world for everyone at Wesco East High School. And we thank you for that. And we appreciate the thoughtful consideration you gave to the candidates to lead us through the rest of this century. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number seven, superintendent's report. Dr. Canales.
This evening, we have two items to report. The first is insurance, and the second, update on construction projects. So, Mr. de la Rosa will lead us through the first one.
Good evening, Mr. President, Dr. Canales. As we mentioned during the budget workshop, Mr. Kennedy asked some questions about the contributions to the health insurance. Normally, I do present as part of the superintendent's report on behalf of Dr. Canales relevant insurance information, if you will. So I decided to break this report down a little bit differently this time for you all, and just to kind of give you an idea of where we're at as far as funding and where we need to be for the next year. So if you look at the spreadsheet here, the middle column indicates what the current TPA, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield had projected. And we based our funding based on those numbers. In the next column, we have actual what we spent through July. So, as of that, we funded approximately $16.2 million. And that varies, and that comes from the employer contribution, which is $470 per employee per month that the district makes, and then what the employees pay for their dependents and if they decide to upgrade their plans. So, one of the things we have to consider is, of course, the runout. So, at the time the fiscal year started, we didn't have an idea where we were going to be at as far as runout from the prior TPA. So the runout is going to be your claims that, of course, we stopped paying on August 31st with the prior TPA. But those are the claims that were incurred, say, in August. So you still have to leave some room for that. So I came up to about $1.1 million. Blue Cross estimated that we would pay $9.4 million. And I don't know if you can follow along with the little arrow here. $9.4 million in actual medical claims. Estimated prescription drug costs, a little under $4 million. And, of course, the admin fees. So they came out to about $16.1 million. We funded based on that number. And then, of course, with the runout that we found out later, we saw that it was going to come out to about $7.2 million in expenditures. So, we did transfer some money into the health insurance fund. If you recall, there was an agenda item that was back earlier in the year. We transferred about $4 million. So, some of the money to cover the runout was included in that transfer. So if you go through actual through July, of course, you've taken your runout, which is 1.1. We've actually spent $8.1 million in actual claims, medical claims. We're estimating anywhere from $800,000 to $1 million in the month of August. And I said that's always a pretty heavy month because, you know, people get things done over the summer, procedures and so forth. And we usually get to see those bills in August, and then, of course, going into September and October. We spent $3.1 million in prescription drugs. We're estimating that we're going to spend about half a million dollars in August. Admin fees, so far, we spent about $2.9 million. Remember, our admin fees are what we paid to Blue Cross to administer the plan, what we pay for stop-loss premium. And, of course, the runout fees that we paid to the prior TPA, of course, are included there as well. We're estimating a stop-loss return of about $85,000. That's a very, very conservative number. It's going to be significantly more. So right now, we're looking at a total estimated for the fiscal year of about $16.7 million, okay? If you take out the freighters' runout, if you want to see what actually we've spent so far on Blue Cross, they said actually coming up for about $15.6 million. So right now, we're in an estimated shortage, like I said, this is very, very preliminary, of about $576,000. It should be significantly less because we should see more stop-loss coming. But again, we figure that we need to be at about $17 million funding, okay, for the next fiscal year, based on what we're paying out this year and in preparation for next year. So that is where we're at right now as far as the funding question. So this is the rationale to fund, you know, the increased employee contribution. This kind of ties into that where we say we need about $17 million for next year. That's what we're anticipating. Overall, when you put in all the apples or all the oranges, when you put everything together, last year at this time, we spent just over $16 million. And right now, like I said, right here, $15.2 million so far. So that's a decrease of about $830,000 less that we spent last year. There have been some questions about, you know, well, you know, as far as medical claims, it's about $1 million less so far. And the question's been asked, well, you know, why is this? You know, why are we spending less money? This is kind of one of the reasons, and this is some reports that came in. What I had mentioned to the board in the past is we have a lot less severe claims this year versus last year. Last year was the perfect storm. So these are all the individuals that we have paid over $50,000 this year so far. This report reflects last year. So as you can see, there's significantly more. There's about 47 individuals that hit about, that hit over $50,000 in medical claims. So that's really the main reason why we're seeing the decrease. Because you see here, total paid, I think that's $4.1 million. And then so far here, it's 1.7. So that would be your major reason why we're seeing a decrease in our medical claims or that we're paying less claims. But regardless of that, we still need to make sure that we fund adequately so we won't have to transfer money in like we did last year.
Mike, just out of the screen that's up right now. Obviously, I can't see any numbers or anything like that, but how many claimants is that?
I think we counted 37, Dr. Canales, earlier. Let me see if I have my notes here. And I should have totaled that. No, I have it right here, yes. 37 versus 17 this year.
17?
Yes.
The difference, about 3 million?
More or less, yes, sir.
More or less.
Thank you, Mike.
And again, can't see the screen.
I'm sorry. Didn't quite translate over well. But that is this part, this is this portion of the report, if anybody has any questions.
Mike, what has been our budget in previous years? This year, you're projecting 17 million. Where were we at?
13 to 14 million. And I have a history of it. If you'd like it, I can give you the update.
Can you put in the update?
Sure. Last year, like I said, it was the perfect storm. So we had a critical loss year last year. So that is really like the difference that we're looking at here. And when you see the medical claims, you can see spikes. And then you can see now that they're pretty much started to...
Do you have a copy of that that we...
You don't? You don't have it? Oh, I'm so sorry.
Just start all over. Some small numbers here, Mikey. And I don't mean, I mean little.
I'll get you the full-size copy. I didn't print it. I apologize. While we move on, I'll get you all bigger copies.
Okay.
If we proceed to the meeting.
Is that it for your part?
That's it for my part. Does y'all have any other questions?
Lose that?
When the employees come back, we'll put it out. Because we have a lot of information to let everybody know.
Okay. Perfect. Perfect. Anybody have any questions on this part so far?
Okay. Just move on.
The next part of our report is on construction updates.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Rosso.
Good evening, Dr. Canales, Mr. Lopez, members of the board. I'm here to present on the construction projects we have going throughout the district. However, considering that it's a very extensive and quite long agenda, I would ask you, I believe you have your printout to the presentation. If you want to take a look at the presentation, I'm glad to wait a couple of minutes or so if you have any questions.
I'll ask, is there any issues that you're having at this time with any of the projects that are underway?
Nothing at all. As far as the schedule goes, we are on schedule. As far as the air conditioning, they have started the air conditionings as of last week. They started some of the units. And we had registration last week on Tuesday, so they made an effort, the contractor, to get those units in the cafeteria started last week. And so part of that process involves that the factory come over and do the startup to ensure that the warranty is obtained and not, for lack of another word, that we don't default on the warranty. But other than that, as far as the schedule goes, even the fieldhouse, I believe, contractor has caught up with the schedule already.
Americo, looking at project number nine, which is the HVAC replacement to the schools, are the principals, I can't see that far. Are the principals here? I can't see.
The principals for the.
Yeah, for Sylvan Gonzalez. I can't see that far.
They're here.
Since y'all have had registrat, yeah, why don't y'all come up, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, just with our systems, when we had registration last week, the only ones back right now is just your administrative staffs, right?
Office staff, our counselors, library staff and offices.
So were your libraries, ACs working, and your office staff area working?
Our office staff is, our cafeteria, they got going for us, and the counseling department, we have portables because their unit is part of the unit that's being replaced. Our library has been out since before the summer, but that's a totally different situation, and it's also being replaced. So they have, they, energy management was really good about getting us portables and fans and.
Okay. So during your registration, did you have any complaints by parents or staff?
No, our cafeteria was working. They got it to work, yes.
Sela, okay?
Same, same exact scenario. Registration was great. It was very cool in the cafeteria. The library area is down, but they've got fans, portables in there, portables in the counseling area as well.
Great. I just, you know, I know a concern was brought up earlier with our systems, but I want to thank energy management for what y'all do to make sure that the parents were okay and your staff is okay while those that need to be there are there, working in a good working environment.
They've been working in and out of our office because our office area is a different unit, so they've been working out of our office as well.
Great. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Americo, we have several projects. One question that I have for you is, will all our facilities be ready to go come day one of school involving anything that's construction project related?
Yes, sir. We are, again, this is one of the most critical ones, the air conditioning.
Right.
And we've been working with the contractors. As a matter of fact, we're pushing them to get all of them started by Wednesday, which is when teachers come back. I know the principals have asked me to convey to the contractor that the most critical one is the libraries because of the staff development, and that's where all teachers are going to be gathering. And so they've done that already, and they will continue working now through Wednesday. A couple of things or items that I need to bring up is that there were some issues with library unit for the unit in Gonzalez, but there, as of today, they were working on getting it up there. They will get it up there by tomorrow and push to get it started by Wednesday as well. The kitchen units are the others who, that needed to be modified, per say, the mounting or the installation of the units, and they're working on those as well.
Okay. Are they working late?
Yes.
Okay, because there's no room for excuses. It needs to be ready.
Yes. No, they have been working late. I've gotten, again, several calls from the principals concerned at times that the doors, you know, who's going to lock them and so forth, that they noticed that the people are out there and they're coming in on weekends, and so, yes, they are.
Okay. All right. We'll just stay on top of it because that's, well, of course, we have to get all our schools ready, but especially with the air conditioning. I mean, those, these are new buildings, newer buildings, there's not that many windows. So, and there's, again, no room for excuses. It has to be done.
Yes, sir.
Does anybody have any other questions on any of the projects for next, our next meeting? Dr. Canales, I want the architects to come and make the presentation of the ones that are ongoing.
Sure.
Okay?
The next regular meeting.
Next regular meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Americo.
Okay, we're moving on to item number eight, consent agenda. And I'll start at my left. Dr. Rivera, let's pull. Oscar?
No, sir.
Andrew?
No, sir.
Patrick?
No, sir.
Okay. Our superintendent has several items that we're going to pull that need clarification, and I'll let her name them.
Okay. First of all, just clarification for the minute.
We have to take a motion, make a motion to tell me which items they are.
It's Consent A.
Okay.
D, and B two.
B two?
V, as in Victor, two.
Okay. Those are the three items?
I move to approve the consent agenda with the exception of A, B, and V, A, D, and V two.
Second.
We have a motion by Andrew and a second by Oscar to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item A, D, and V two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Dr. Canales, go ahead.
The first, for clarification on A, the approval of the minutes, on page ten, we don't provide transportation if students live within two miles. It indicates that we do, so they're within a two-mile radius, we don't provide transportation unless there's a hazardous route, so that's the first one. For D, this is for the renewal fees to participate in Rita One's Library Service and Media Cooperative. Just to make it clear, it says ADA, and it has seventeen thousand one hundred, I believe, and fifty-two. That should be enrollment, not the word ADA. And then in V two, the second ranked vendor, this is for serving counter replacements for Armando Cuero Middle School proposal. The recommendations stay the same in all of these. This is just, the second rank had two hundred and ninety-seven points and not, not five hundred and some. It was indicating what you got.
But it doesn't change the outcome.
Doesn't change any actions, it's just pointing clarification on the typos.
I move to approve consent agenda items A, D, and V two.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Patrick and a second by Andrew to approve items A, D, and V two on the consent agenda.
I will clarify that I move to approve items as clarified by administration.
Correct. Okay, we have a motion to approve the items A, D, and V two as clarified by administration. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Before I move on, a little matter for the records, let the record reflect that E C Dorro left the meeting at seven thirty-three. Okay, I'll take care of that. Okay, moving on to item number nine, discussion items. Item A, first reading of policy update one-one-one from the Texas Association of School Boards, Tasby. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, this update one-one-one from the Texas, from Tasby centers on eight local policies. Mr. Garcia is going to quickly walk us through the policy changes, and this is a first reading, so no action is required.
Thank you, Dr. Canales. Good evening, Mr. Lopez, members of the board. As Dr. Canales mentioned, this is a first reading of Tasby Policy Update one-eleven. There are fifty-seven legal policies included. There's eight local policies. Board action will be needed to approve the local policies after the second reading. I'm going to quickly review the local policies, and staff is here to answer any questions that the board might have. So the first local policy is BBD Local, and that has to do with board members' training and orientation. And basically, it says that the law requires the board president to announce board member continuing education status at the last regular board meeting. Then we have CAA Local. This has to do with fiscal management goals and objectives, specifically financial ethics. And this is recommended to clarify that reports of suspected impropriety may be made to a person who has authority to investigate the alleged activity, including the other individuals listed in the policy, and not only to certain persons or peace officers, a crime witness at the school. CJA Local has to do with contracted services, criminal history, and this authorizes the district employee in charge of a facility to determine whether an employee of a contracting or subcontracting entity who does not have the required criminal history review be permitted to enter the facility in an emergency. The next policy is DH Local. This is, in this policy, a district employee who holds a Texas handgun license can store a handgun or other firearm in a locked vehicle in a district parking area provided the handgun or firearm is not loaded and not in plain view. However, the back and forth between state and federal law permits a district to revise this policy to allow such an employee to have a loaded handgun or firearm in their parked vehicles. We would need to contact our Tasby policy consultant to revise this local policy. The next policy is DHE Local, employees' standards of conduct, searches in alcohol, drug testing. And in this policy, the district may remove from duty and require testing of an employee if there is reasonable suspicion that the employee is under the influence of alcohol or drugs used in violation of this policy, and it also addresses the consequences if the employee refuses to comply with the testing. The next one is DI Local. This policy is recommended for deletion as the content is adequately covered through the district DH legal and local policies. The FEA Local has to do with attendance, compulsory attendance, and in this case, the policy requires a district to excuse a student seventeen years of age or older for up to four days during the student's enrollment in high school to pursue military enlistment. And finally, the last policy is GKA Local. This is community relations, conduct on school premises, and basically, it's the same as a DH Local about the handguns, except that this is for community. So those are the eight local policies for first revision, or we will bring it to you a second time, and then you can take action on that. If there are any questions, I'm here as well as administration. We can answer your questions at this point.
This is the first reading, right?
This is the first reading, yes, sir.
They're all very clear.
Yeah, they're very clear.
Okay.
There's a lot of work to go through these. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Item B, interim financial report for eleven months ended July 31st, 2018. Dr. Canales.
Mr. Andres Sanchez will be presenting this information. Again, for this one, there is no action required.
Yes. Mr. Lopez, members of the board, Dr. Canales. For the eleven months ended July 31st, in the general fund, out of one hundred and seventy-four point eight million dollars, we have received or have receivable in our books, one hundred and sixty-nine point five million. That represents ninety-six point nine percent of our budget. We have received most of the revenue we had budgeted. On expenditures and all the functions together, out of one hundred and eighty-two point eight million, we have expended or encumbered one hundred and fifty point seven million. That represents eighty-two point four percent in the general fund. Do you have any questions?
So at the end of August, August 31st, what do you anticipate the percentage left over?
Percentage?
Of the total budget? You'll spend all of it?
No, no.
That's what I mean.
Ninety-three, ninety-four percent at the most. We got to do payroll plus additional days that belong to next year we had to accrue.
So you anticipate how much left over?
I had mentioned earlier that it would be about an additional one point seven right now or left from here. It'd probably be more, but right now, I don't give you a number, it's going to be too high and I want to be off. But at least one point seven. Hopefully, we can get it to two, two point five, or even more. But the end of the month, we'll have a better idea on it, because that's when we get all the invoices that we're going to pay, items that were received. If they don't get received, this year belongs to next year, so we'll have a better idea how much P O we're going to have to pay, which are we going to close, so we'll have better numbers for that.
All right.
Any other questions?
That's it? Thank you. Item C, presentation of 2018 anticipated collection rate of property taxes for fiscal year 2018, 2019. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, no action is required. We recommend that you review the 2018 anticipated collection rates for property taxes for fiscal year 2018, 2019.
This is a report that the tax assessor collector has to make to the taxed entities, and they're certifying through this agenda item that the estimated collection rate for the year 2018, which is for fiscal year 2018, nineteen, is projected at a hundred percent, and since last year, they projected it also at a hundred percent. There are no excess debt tax collections that need to be reported in Schedule B for the 2017, there's every report. It's a report that the tax assessor of the county has to do, but they have to report to every entity. That's all the report is.
Okay.
Okay.
Now an action? Okay. Item D, acknowledgment of Hidalgo County Tax Office Report for July 2018, current and delinquent taxes.
Yes, for the, through July 31st, again, on the current taxes, the original levy was twenty-six million, one hundred and forty-five thousand. We have collected twenty-four million, eight hundred and sixty-six thousand. They have some adjustments throughout the year. We are right now at ninety-four point ninety-one percent collections. We had budgeted ninety-one. Last year, we collected ninety-four point twenty-six, so we have collected point sixty-five percent more than last year. On delinquent taxes, out of four million, two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, we have collected one million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand. That represents twenty-seven point ninety-six percent. Last year, we collected twenty-five point forty-four, so that is two point five percent more than last year. Again, our goal was twenty percent only. Our goal was twenty-seven, we budgeted twenty, so we have collected eight percent more on the revenues this year.
Good?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Andres. Moving on to item number ten, discussion and possible action items. Item A, discussion and possible action to approve an order calling for the November sixth, 2018 WSD school board election. Dr. Canales.
Board of Trustees, I'm recommending that you approve an order for the Weslaco Independent School District School Board election to be held on Tuesday, November sixth, 2018, for the purpose of electing four members of the Board of Trustees of the Weslaco Independent School District. And the places are place four, the office is currently held by Dr. Jaime Rodriguez; place five, that office is held by Mr. Andrew Gonzalez; place six, the office is held by Mr. Oscar Caballero; and place seven, the office is held by Mr. E C Dorro Nieto. The order has been reviewed and approved by our school attorney.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second. I have a motion by Dr. Rivera and a second by Dr. Rodriguez to approve the calling of the order for the November sixth, 2018 WSD school board election. Is there any more discussion?
Good luck.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item B, discussion and possible action to endorse a nominated individual from another school board within our Tasby district to fill a position on the Tasby Board of Directors.
Board of Trustees, I recommend that you consider endorsing a nominated individual from our Tasby district to fill a position on the Tasby Board of Directors, position A. If the board elects not to endorse an individual, no action is required. If you do, action is required. We have two candidates for our area, Patricia Okanya, Permission Consolidate Independent School District, and Mr. Oscar Riojas from Mercedes ISD.
I make a motion to nominate Oscar Riojas, Mercedes ISD.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to nominate Oscar Riojas for nomination for Tasby district to fill a position as Tasby Board of Directors. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item C, discussion and possible action to designate a delegate and an alternate representative to serve on the 2018 TASB Delegate Assembly. Dr. Canales.
Board of trustees, I recommend that you designate a delegate and alternate representative to serve on the 2018 TASB Delegate Assembly, which is scheduled to meet during the TASB TASA conference held in Austin, Texas on September 27 through 30, 2018.
Okay. Dr. Rivera, you did this a couple of years back, or you were nominated?
I don't even know.
You didn't come to the meeting?
You didn't come to the meeting?
Not the meeting.
Motion to approve?
Well, do you want it?
Okay, yeah.
You wanna take it? Okay.
I'll make a motion to nominate Dr. Richard Rivera as our delegate.
Okay. Let me add, if you can add Isidoro as a backup, as he was walking out, he...
Let me include Isidoro Nieto as an alternate.
Yep.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion to nominate Dr. Rivera as the delegate and then Isidoro as the... Serve as a backup delegate, as an alternate. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. So we have Dr. Rivera and Isidoro. Okay. And item D, discussion and possible action for the board to approve memorandum of understanding between Wesco Independent School District and South Texas College, SDC, to offer certification through a phlebotomy program.
Board of trustees, we have a partnership with South Texas College for Wesco East High School and Wesco High School. The students enroll in practical courses with health science. They receive knowledge, curriculum, and skills, and continue to add education units so that they can become certified in the practice of phlebotomy. Upon acquisition of this certification of completion and endorsed by the National Health Association, students will be qualified and eligible to be gainfully employed upon in any healthcare industry upon completing. We are recommending that you approve this memorandum of understanding. If you have any questions, we have Ms. Avila.
Second.
Is this...
We have a motion by Andrew and a second by Dr. Rodriguez to approve the memorandum of understanding between Wesco ISD and South Texas College to offer the certification through a phlebotomy program. Okay. Any discussion? Patrick, go ahead.
Is this money already budgeted? Or do we have to reallocate funds?
It's covered through CTE funds, and it's 322.50 per student.
Okay. Well, as long as it's already budgeted, it's a good idea.
It's budgeted.
Thank you, Ms. Avila.
It's a great idea.
Is this something continuing, or did we have this before? This is new? It's brand new?
How do we decide on these programs? Is it just on a need base? Is it...
It's... We look at... Yeah, I'll let Ms. Avila. Ms. Avila, will you...
With the new accountability, it's on the state and federal accountability list, so we're trying to get the students certified for state accountability as well.
Okay.
Can we look at the workforce and the demands in different industries so that kids can be employed?
Well, most definitely, and also for the accountability, it helps the campuses as well. But that's first and foremost, yes, most definitely.
Okay. What grade is this offered to?
It's practicum, so it's usually the seniors. They've gotta be eighteen, yes.
Okay. Well, good thing.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item E, discussion and possible action to approve the optional flexible school day program for the 2018, 2019 school year. Dr. Canales.
Board of trustees, this was covered in the public hearing earlier this evening. We are... I am recommending that you approve an optional flexible school day program for the 2018, 2019 school year for students who are at risk of dropping out of high school.
Motion by Andrew and a second by Patrick to approve the optional flexible school day program for the 2018, 2019 school year. Is there any further discussion? Okay, we just had a workshop on this, and it's a public hearing, and it's a good thing. We're able to recover children that would not have graduated had they not gone through this program. And I love this program. I think there was several discussions on it as to the positives on this, no negatives. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item F, discussion and possible action to amend the district's health benefits program employees' contribution. Dr. Canales.
Board of trustees, as we all know, the cost of Hillcar continues to rise dramatically. However, the district has not adjusted its contribution levels to account for the trend increase of 10% to 12% each year. Even... So we are recommending that you approve the employee contribution level, and this is increasing from the base of, is it $9? Mr. Delarosa, will you help me out with this one?
Yes, sir.
To $25.
So it's about a $16 increase to the employee-only base plan, and then everybody else will see about a $25 increase per month. And if you look at the attachment, and I'll put it up here so y'all can see it, downloaded As I mentioned in the superintendent's report, we need to... We're anticipating to fund $17 million for next year's plan. So these are the way the numbers are broken down here, and it comes out to about $17.1 million overall. This is, of course, with the district's contribution increasing, which will be part of the budget meeting next week.
Mike Lester, we... I know when we were freight, they didn't pay anything, then we went up, and then we funded the account, and we're gonna increase again, just so that we're aware of... How much more are we putting into it for this coming year?
The employer contribution equals about $400,000. And then what we're gonna put in... The district is gonna contribute about $13.6 million, which is this total right here. The employees, through dependents, and of course, higher electing higher plans, fund about $3.5 million.
Okay.
For a total of $17.1 million. And last year, we increased the district's contribution.
Right.
We did not increase the employee contribution, excuse me.
So last year, we went from 400 to 420 or something?
We went from... Help me out, I think we went from 430 to 470. And then now, with next year's budget, we like to go to 485.
485. And of course, also... An $16 increase for our employee?
It's $16 for the employee only on the base plan. Everybody else is up, it's $25.
Mikey, and compared to most districts around us?
I believe you do have that information also, and I'll pull this up here. San Benito ISD, they're at 56.73. Harlingen right now doesn't charge anything, but I understand that's gonna change. Donna does 15, but I do understand that's gonna change as well. PSJA is still zero, and this is just base plan.
So we're just staying in line, right?
We're pretty much in line. You have McCalleen.
Not really. I think we're a lot lower, if you look at the big picture.
We're a lot lower, yes.
Because of the co-pay.
Yeah.
That's where it all... You know, a person or a family will possibly go to the...
What I'm trying to get at is, we have a really good plan for our employees.
We have a very good plan.
And so, I just want, you know, for the public to know that even though they're gonna have to contribute just a little bit more, it's still kind of in line.
It's actually still very competitive.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Andrew and a second by Oscar to approve the district's health benefit program plan employees' contribution. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item G, discussion and possible action for the board to consider renewal of the district's voluntary insurance products or authorize administration to solicit proposals for the same. Dr. Canales.
Board of trustees, I am recommending that you approve renewal of all the seven voluntary insurance products for the second year of a three-year renewal option. We have Mr. Delarosa here, if you have any questions.
I move to renew. I'll second.
Motion by Patrick and a second by Oscar Caballero to approve the renewal of the district's voluntary insurance products. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item H, discussion and possible action for the board to consider approval, approve a plan of finance and a method of sale for the possible insurance and sale...
Issuer.
That doesn't sound right, does it?
Issuer.
Okay, possible issuance and sale of limited maintenance tax notes, sales series 2018. Dr. Canales.
Board of trustees, this is due to the flood of June 20. We had estimated, and Mr. Andres has talked about, anywhere from 10 to 15 million, then it was 8.5 to 10 million. What we do need now, that we have some sounder information, is 5 million. Is that correct? So I am recommending that the Board of Trustees approve to proceed with the final plan of finance as presented, and select a method of sale for the issuance and sale of approximately 5 million maintenance tax notes for the purchase of buses, school buses, other district vehicles, and equipment. So do you have Mr. Vella here who's presenting?
Uh-huh.
Okay.
I support President, members of the board, Dr. Canales. Ladies and gentlemen, for the record, my name is Chris Vella with Hilltop Securities, financial advisors to the district. We submitted a presentation for the board, and I'd like to start on page six... I'm sorry, page five, which is the summary of the plan of finance, and start out by saying that the Wesco Independent School District intends to issue limited maintenance tax notes, series 18, for purchase of school buses, district vehicles, equipment, and pay the cost of issuance of the notes. The district will request a limited tax rating from Standard and Poor's for the notes. Currently, the district's unlimited debt is rated AA by Fitch and A+ by Standard and Poor's. Insurance on the notes will be considered by Hilltop Securities. The financial advisor will determine if insurance benefits the transaction. A decision will be made once the bids are received and analyzed. The structure, the tax exam bank qualified fixed interest rates through the maturity, total project fund of $5 million deposited to the construction, to the project fund. It's a 15-year amortization. Interest will be payable semi-annually on February 15, August 15, beginning on February 15 of 19. Principal will be payable annually on 15, February 15, beginning February 15 of 19, and it's got a 10-year call option dated February 15 of '28. The analysis shown in the subsequent pages was derived based on pricing views as of August 10, 18, plus 30 basis points for purposes of illustration. The results are estimate only and are subject to change at any time. This page is a summary of your outstanding limited tax debt. The total debt service column is what you existentially are paying on an annual basis. And then the proposed limited maintenance tax note, series 18, it's for the series 18 notes, and then, of course, your total new limited debt debt service. Sources of funds, par amount of the bonds, 4.855. Premium on the bonds, 286,748. For total sources of funds, a $5,141,748. $5 million deposited to the project fund, cost of issuance, underwriters discount, notes issuance, for total uses of funds, a $5,141,748 to match the total sources of funds. The average life of the bonds is 11.098 years. The assumed all-interest cost rate is 3.940. Pricing views as of 810, as I previously stated, plus the 30 basis points. Assumes A+, double A bank qualified interest rate, subject to change at any time. Assumes a closing date of 11, November 7 of 18, for delivery of the bond proceeds. The next page that I would like to go through would be the financing team, financial advisor, Hilltop Securities, bond counsel, Bickerstaff, Heath, Delgado, and Acosta, paying agent, US Bank, rating agency, Standard and Poor's, underwriter to be determined by the district if negotiated sale, underwriters counsel to be chosen by the underwriters, and then the timetable. And the schedule of events. Page 19. 19.
Page what?
One more. On the schedule of events, on August 13, which is tonight, present the plan of plans to the Board of Trustees. The board considers and approves final plan of finance and directs staff...
19.
And consultants to move forward with the plan of finance. The Board of Trustee considers and approves a method of sale and appoints underwriter if negotiated method of sale is chosen. Last day of Board of Trustees to appoint an underwriter if negotiated sale was approved on 8/13. Pricing would be on October 15 at a special board meeting, pricing of the notes. Board of Trustee authorizes issuance of the notes. Attorney General approves the sale before the closing, closing and delivery of the funds to the district on the 7th of November, and of course, the first interest and principal payment on the notes. The reason for the special board meeting is because the previous week, which is your regular board meeting, is Columbus Day, and the markets are closed on that day, and there will be no transactions of any financial nature. So we checked with our underwriting desk, and they don't recommend selling the week before and keeping the paper for that long. So they recommend that, if at all possible, a special co-board meeting. Any questions?
Mr. Vella, do you recommend a negotiated sale over a competitive?
We did, and we recommended that to the board, I mean, to the staff.
Okay.
We've done that before when we do the maintenance tax notes.
And as far as the debt service on the maintenance tax notes, is that built into your proposed budget for this coming year?
The first payment would be in February 2019.
Okay.
287,000 that we added to the budget already. I forgot to mention that when we mentioned it earlier, when we did the adjustments to the budget, we also included that amount in the budget.
Just a very simple question, very simple. We're gonna borrow 5 million.
Yes.
For 15 years. Right? 15 years?
Twenty, huh?
15 years is correct. Some page second.
All right. Yes, sir.
5 million for 15 years. Okay. At the end of 15 years, how much do we pay back? Principal and interest? Everything. 7,164. So we're gonna borrow 5 million. So in 15 years, we're gonna pay back how much? Okay. Or 4,855,855,000 in principal and 2,309 in interest. That totals up to the 7.164. Okay, Andres. How many total loans do we have? We keep on borrowing money. So every year, have you calculated how much you're gonna put in the budget for all the loans that we borrowed?
Yes, sir.
How much?
The amount right now would be...
Yeah, how many loans do we have? Total loans?
This could be the fourth one that we have.
But how much?
Oh, total amount? Ah, I don't remember right now. Well, everything that we would... That we have already right now is 26,295 in principal, and we're looking at borrowing 4,855 on this one. So it'll be about 32 million, including this loan. We borrowed, for example, 12.7 million to do HVAC replacements in a lot of the schools.
That's what I'm getting at. We get so many loans.
Right.
Now you gotta pay them back.
Yeah.
It's easier to get the money upfront, but then you gotta pay it back.
And the reason we had to borrow because our bond didn't pass, so we had to do a lot of improvements, and we had to do the loans.
I understand.
Yeah. And they get paid from MNO taxes, not from INN taxes. For the current budget that we have, we pay them.
What's the life of the vehicles that we're gonna buy with this proposed maintenance?
Buses are at least 10 years, 10 to 15 years for the buses. Sometimes, we have some buses that are 20 years.
I guess my concern was I don't wanna... I'm low to take out a loan on an item that will be, you know, we'll have to salvage it before, and, you know, we're not longer using it, and we're still paying on it. You know what I mean?
Right, yes.
It's kinda like using a credit card to buy groceries, and you've eaten it, but you're still paying interest on it later on.
Yes.
Kind of an idea.
Mr. Garcia, what's the oldest bus we still have in working condition?
We had some two thousands.
That were still running?
Yes.
So they're eighteen years?
About eighteen years.
Okay.
And actually, those, those were the ones that survived the flood.
They're right, okay. So, Mr. Delarosa, can you please come to? And again, Andres, the note is to replace the buses, the Suburbans, half the fleet, the white fleet, the maintenance, the Suburbans and all the buses, correct?
Yes, and we have a couple of other projects included.
But, and then some, what, moors and whatnot?
Some works at the
Okay. Mr. Delarosa. How many times have we flooded in, at the bus barn?
To my knowledge
In the last thirty years, give or take.
To my knowledge, we've not, that area has never flooded. And I believe the assistant director's been here twenty-seven years and he can recall
How many claims have we filed?
None.
How many inches of rain did we get that day?
That day
Between sixteen and eighteen?
Well, no, the highest point was about four, a little over four feet.
Over four feet?
When water receded, it was about two and a half that stayed there for about two, three days.
So Was there anything?
Officially sixteen inches in four hours.
Do we have anything, or Dr. Rivera, did you have anything in place, going back to when you were the super, of a contingency plan to move units, vehicles, stuff like that?
Yes, we had, we had a plan.
Y'all had a plan back in the day?
During hurricane
Well, I guess my point is, we can you know when a hurricane's coming, right? The forecasters tells us hurricanes come and prepare yourselves. What you cannot prepare for is flood. We weren't prepared to take on that amount of water. The forecast the day before for June the twentieth was three to six inches of rain. You would assume that the vehicle
I went back and looked when I heard the, the gentleman
What was the forecast, Mike?
And I'll email those to the board for their, for our, I'll email it to Rosemary. So the email that came out from the National Weather Service on Tuesday called for isolated two to four inches in isolated areas. Two to four inches produces two to three feet of water and poor drainage.
So
And like a
With that information, Mr. Garcia, you had no reason to move our fleet?
Not at that point, sure, because we just
Okay, so none of us like to borrow money. But the point of the matter is, we cannot control what happened that day. And so now we're stuck with having to provide vehicles for the students of our district. As much as we don't like to borrow the money, and you're right, Dr. Rivera, we're going to borrow five and pay back seven, but the point is, if you don't do it, then what do we do? Where is the solution if you don't do this? Because the bond did not pass. So what do we do? What is y'all's solution if you don't approve this tonight? What is y'all's solution to do it? And if you had something in place, then let's look at what Doc used to have in place, but it's not a hurricane where we can know, board up your homes, move your vehicles, protect your children. So what do y'all have in place? And I'm not doing anything here other than the fact that, you know, we had somebody earlier say that we're just spending money and, and just to put it out there, and that's not the truth. The truth is, we need to take care of our students and this is the way to do it. Now, if y'all have a better solution, fine, but I've never seen rain, that much rain, ever. I'm forty-three and I asked my mama who's seventy-three and she's never seen that much rain. And so unless y'all have a solution to help our students and instead of people going out there, because I'm getting calls on why we're doing this, if y'all have a solution, then bring the solution. But Mr. Garcia and Mr. Delarosa couldn't expect eighteen inches of rain or more in an area that is not a designated flood zone.
Did you practice that or what? Because nobody's going against this loan.
No.
No.
Nobody's going against the loan.
Again, I got, I got calls and
I know, just say that, that you had got calls because
That's okay, but
Because we're all know and understand, all you really had to say was that we had a storm
Well, that's okay, and I did it the way
And that is the reason that we're having to, to borrow the money, which is very understandable.
Yeah, that's fine.
And it's very clear to every single board member here that we did have the storm, like you, like you stated, and that is why we're having to borrow the money. Nobody went to another, another solution, you know, and we all understand that the only way that we could do it is by, you know, sacrificing some projects and, and putting the kids through hardship and the whole district through hardship.
Just being transparent, Mr. Lopez.
And that's why we're moving forward. Okay, so we
You're, you're right, Mr. Lopez, and, you know, my question, my question was very simple. We just can't keep on, we need to borrow, I understand that, but you can't keep on borrowing and borrowing because then you have to pay it back. So every year, you put a large amount into your budget. And that was my only question.
Yeah.
We have, we, we need the buses. We gotta do this, but also we have to be very, very careful that we can pay it back. Like a credit card, you can't keep on borrowing on a credit card. That's my, that was my, my concern.
And make sure that you keep tally of what we're having to do and why we're having to pay extra because some of our past bonds have not passed. And moving forward, we will need to cross that road again. We can't talk about it right now, but we will need to cross, cross that road again. Moving forward.
Along the lines of, along the lines of what Dr. Rivera said, that we have to pay help with the budget, we didn't go with a ten-year option. If we had picked up ten years instead of fifteen years, the payment would have been somewhere between four hundred and fifty to four hundred and fifty thousand per year and we saved maybe eight hundred million, eight hundred thousand dollars in interest.
Let's do that.
So because of the situation we have on the budget, we went with this year.
Okay.
Like Mr. Vella said, it could be paid early after ten years, so we have more money later at the end of ten years, we could pay it. We don't have to wait, so we'll save interest from years eleven to fifteen.
But as a superintendent, all those loans that we had, are they paid back already?
We, we still have two, there is that one payment to go
The old caps, the old caps loan?
Yes, yeah. We're almost done, one more payment year, next year.
So back to my, so back to my Back to my question, how many loans do we have altogether?
For next year, will be four years, four loans left.
Four lo-
One of the caps is still there, the one we got for HVAC, the one for fifteen million, the generated seventeen million, and this one will be the fourth one.
Okay.
Can we read the item again so we can either make a motion or discuss it some more? Discussion and possible action for the board to consider approve a plan of finance and a method of sale for the proposal of issuance, sale, issuance and sale of limited maintenance tax note series two thousand eighteen. Dr. Canales?
We are recommending that the Board of Trustees approve to proceed with the final plan of finance as presented and select a method of sell for the issuance and sell of approximately five million maintenance tax notes for the purchase of school buses, other district vehicles and equipment.
Someone.
A motion by Andrew?
Was that included that it would be a negotiated sale? Dr. Canales?
I'm sorry. Oh, yes, administration recommends the negotiated sell method of sell for the maintenance tax notes. Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
Will I get a second?
I'll second, I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Andrew, second by Oscar to approve a plan of finance and a method of sale for the possible issuance and sale of limited maintenance tax note series two thousand eighteen. Is there any further discussion?
One quick question, Mr. Sanchez.
Yes, sir.
On the, the insurance reimbursement, so this is, these funds are going to be to cover what's not going to, what, the total cost of, of replacing all the vehicles and the buses and what, where does the insurance reimbursement come into play?
I had listed on the agenda, three point two million dollars reverse insurance settlement on buses, Suburbans and pickup trucks. That's going to help with this. This is going to be additional for the building, but that's another area.
Okay.
And we don't have the final amount until yet, so, but on these items, it will be about three point two. For deducting that from the amount that we need to buy, we need about five million dollars to, to borrow.
That's preliminary, preliminary three point two million. It's not final.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item A, discussion and possible action for the board to select one or more underwriters for the possible issuance and sale of limited maintenance tax note series two thousand eighteen. Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, I'm recommending that you approve to select one underwriter company for the possible issuance and sell of approximately five million maintenance tax notes for the purchase of school buses, other district vehicles and equipment. The administration, the financial advisors recommend to the board to select one company as the underwriters for this transaction due to the size of the issue. If the board is inclined to select two underwriting companies, administration recommends to hire one company as senior underwriters and another company as manager underwriters. The senior underwriters would be assigned to sell sixty percent of the bond issue and the manager underwriters would be assigned to sell forty percent of the bond issue respectively. And we have Mr. Vella and Mr. Sanchez here.
I see that we worked with two before, Estrada and Hossa and Company and Frost Capital Markets.
Yes, sir.
Have either one, has either one's work been better than the other?
No, they both performed very well.
Is there one that you would recommend?
Either one, Estrada has in the past acted as senior and of course, Frost has been your co-manager. Frost Bank has very good distribution in the area of bank qualified, specifically bank qualified. So either way that you would like to go would work.
Okay, then I'll move to put Estrada and Hossa and Company as the senior and Frost Capital Markets as the managing.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Patrick and a second by Andrew to approve two underwriters for the possible issuance of sale of limited man, tax, series two thousand, tax notes, series two thousand eighteen, that being Estrada and Hossa and Company and Frost Capital Markets. Which one, with which?
With Estrada being the senior and Frost being the manager.
And, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item J, discussion and possible action to, thank you, Chris.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vella.
Discussion and possible action to ratify the purchase of ten school buses and five vehicles as a result of damage associated with severe weather in June two thousand eighteen. Dr. Canales?
Board of Trustees, on June twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, at the special board meeting, you approved an item to ratify and approve the procurement of materials, labor and other services as needed for the immediate repairs of the district facilities and/or equipment damaged because of the unforeseen heavy rains that occurred in Wasco, Texas on June twentieth, twenty eighteen and thereafter. And this was allowed by the Texas Education Code. We are recommending that you ratify the purchase of ten conventional school buses, three pickup trucks and two Suburbans SUVs ordered between Tuesday, July tenth, twenty eighteen and Friday, August third, twenty eighteen from the vendors listed below, and there is a list of vendors.
This million dollars is accounted for in your proposed budget?
Certainly.
The, this, the total estimated cost was what, one million, eighty-eight thousand dollars?
Yes, this is, it's a actual cost. This is a purchase order that we issued.
Okay.
And, and July, July twelve board meeting, we had a budget amendment to bring money from fund balance and we increased revenues also to set up the money for all the buses and the pickup trucks and Suburbans.